Mr. What you call the role, please?
Wes Grimes.
Grimes.
JR Huddleston.
Here.
Debra Johnston.
Who?
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
David Burris. Thank you.
Would you join me in a pleasure?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've been asked by the public to remind the council to be very personal with your microphones, speak right into them. Otherwise, the public is having a problem hearing us. Get up close and personal with your microphones, please. Remind the council about conflict of interest items. If there's anything on the agenda that you feel you shouldn't be voting on, please let the council know before you vote. We've been needing a motion to approve the agenda with one change to item J under new business. And it will be a possible motion discussion to authorize the finance officer to reissue one South Dakota fifth CD for a term of 12 months for account 701. So we'll be changing to South Dakota fifth to one and deleting 621 as one of the accounts and then the 701 will be named.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as an amended item J to read a possible motion and discussion to authorize the finance officer to reissue one South Dakota fifth CD for a term of 12 months for account 701.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from October 19th meeting, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 19th council meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the bills in between, please.
I make a motion to approve the bills in between $166,769.41.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the current claims.
Make a motion to approve the current claims.
Second.
Discussion?
Now, I got a question. Page seven, lighting maintenance contract. I guess are we still, are they still cleaning their lights twice a year? Is that part of the contract?
We talked about that a couple of years ago and I may misspeak here and I'll clarify, but the original contract was for them to come and clean them all, but not to do it twice a year. It wasn't written in there. They'll do it as needed and as requested. I can send you the contract, but I remember talking about that a few years ago with Billy and then clarifying with them that it was originally they'd come in and clean them all and change them all out and then it was going to be as needed.
Well, for $530, for that amount, that's monthly amount or that's a?
Monthly.
Okay, that's what I thought. $530 bucks for them, if they don't do anything, they still get $530 bucks a month.
And if we don't have it, it's much more than that for repairs. And I believe the contract is coming up soon, so we can have different opportunities.
Speaking to you might get better.
Did you hear it?
Yeah, I did, but I don't know if they did.
I guess this is maybe some public works you maybe look at. We have our own bucket truck. We, it's not too hard to change a light bulb, I guess is my thing.
But it's broken.
And it's not toned yet.
It's what?
The one we tie it up.
What lights do we have that are more than 20 feet off the ground?
The ones that, the light that breathe. And all that, all of my path.
Okay. Maybe we can split it up or something. I don't, I'm just.
I'll send you the contract and confirm what I said.
You know, we paid, what is it, $11,000 a month for electricity for hot springs for all our lights.
I think it's a little more than that, isn't it?
Well, I don't remember. That just comes to mind and I think, you know, another $5,000 a year or $6,000 a year for maintenance on a lot of this, that seems like it's a lot. I don't know. Okay. Go ahead.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any communications from the public?
Well. I, I think so. I have a constituent here that has maybe a little bit of a question for us.
Right, so on the night of?
Excuse me, could you come down with a microphone?
And please state your name for the record.
And you get a free plastic bag.
Free plastic bag.
Free plastic bag, just go ahead and put that over the microphone, please. And then when you leave, that's a present on, on the city.
You put your lunch.
How's that? Can you hear me now? Ron Elliott, live at 2305 Lincoln Avenue. On the night of September 25th, my wife and I were just laying down going to bed and my son came upstairs. We live in a split level home. Came upstairs and said, there's water in the downstairs floor. So we went down there. Well, it was a lot more than just water. It was water and sewage. So we contacted the dispatcher to see if anybody else had mentioned anything to them. I think at that point she said she didn't have any calls right then, but our next door neighbor was outside at the same time. They were on the phone. I'm not sure who they were on the phone with. But I asked them, required if they were having issues and they said, yeah, their whole downstairs was backed up in sewage. But, you know, we submitted the claim for damages to the city. So far, we haven't heard anything back yet. I've spoken with John Kefler, I believe the insurance individual.
Claim adjuster?
Yeah, right. He's basically just said that they're still looking into it and so far we haven't heard anything back yet. Cleanup and tear out was about $2,400, I believe, somewhere around there. That was submitted in our claim to the city. And also what their estimate was for replacement of everything because it was two bedrooms, bathroom, living room, hallway. They had to tear all that out because it was all sewage. Our insurance adjuster came in. His estimate was quite a bit more, I think more around $14,000 to have everything replaced. So, I don't know, we're just trying to figure out what to, what to expect. It's been, been well over a month. Our insurance did cut us a check. We were just trying to, but it was only for $5,000, which obviously is not going to be enough to cover everything. Which, if it was our stuff, I would understand that, but it wasn't, it was our stuff.
All right. Obviously, we need to follow up and understand.
We have the claim and we work with claims associates. John Kefler is your contact for this claim.
Right.
So that's who I'd reach out to. If you need your claim number, his phone number, his email, I have all that information.
I have all that. Last time I spoke to him, which was last week, he said that he would look into it. He was, I don't remember who he said he was going to call and he'd give a call back.
I know he reached out to Tracy and spoke with both Tracy and Cole in our, Tracy Bastian is our public works engineer and Cole Richards is our wastewater foreman. I know John had a conversation with them last week, so he is still actively working it and he, he wanted to come to City Hall. I could call him and get information for you, but it's always easier if you just call. That's who we hire and who handles our claims for us, so.
Right. Well, I just tried to figure out, you know, because I called Tracy the day after and he basically assured that everything was going to get taken care of. Here we are still one and a half later. He just doesn't seem like John's.
I can help and follow up with him tomorrow and tell him that you were at a council meeting and you're looking for an update. Tracy's not a claims adjuster, so his assurance to you is probably, you know, just letting you know that we do what we could. But I, if you'd like, I'd reach out to John any morning tomorrow and ask him to please get ahold of you.
Okay, that would work.
Would you remind me that date again?
September 25th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you, Ron.
So Ronnie, I do feel that, you know, we need to make sure we follow up and not just say that we gave it to our claims adjuster and then, you know, let them figure it out. As a city, we need to be assured that everything's being taken care of appropriately and that you'll get an answer as to when things are going to be taken care of. I don't want to just hand it off to the claims adjuster and think our responsibility is gone. So we'll get an answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ronnie.
Anybody else? All right. Well, that takes us to the Business Improvement District Board Annual Lendings. Wally, I believe that's you. And like Ronnie, you get a free plastic bag on behalf of the city.
Dear Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilman, Mayor Boykeshra and Chairman of the Bit Work, the Business Improvement District, we try every year, let you know what you're doing with the money, whatever we collect. This year is not going that well and you know why? Because it's coronavirus. But our budget is set up this year for $76,390, including advertising from the Rowan and Schultz. So we're doing with the South Dakota Tourism. They cover 50% and we pay 50%, so it's a matching rent. So this year we went down to $30,000 to $35,000. We do the same thing, Southern Hills Vacation Guide, 2800, Magazine, Hot Springs Magazine, 2000, Membership. Because we belong to the Black Hills Badlands. We get cheaper advertising on the South Dakota Vacation Guide. So we got that one also for Herman Global International Marketing. We do that one with the Google, the German used to work for Yellowstone. Now he's doing on his own, he's from Wyoming and he's doing a really good job. Advertise us on a marketing for international. This year we shut down international and just do that one in the state because there was no travel from international, I was saying. We do also pay $10,000 Digital Media Coordinator for Justin. Yellowstone Journal, we advertise that one every year. It's about $7,200. We bring in low emails for the people looking on it so we can send them if we do something in the town. Fireworks, second year, we decide to pay $5,000 for the city. I hope you enjoy them. And what else we doing? Postage for the Chamber 800, Airphone 1,000 and special project, we didn't put anything, but in the last meeting, I make, asked some Chamber Director what they thinking about it. Put one red brand for the vehicle, for police vehicle. They agree with that one and it's, I think so much money to do that. Yeah, and the next meeting we don't have in January. What I tried to do at that meeting, get three abrasals and put the lights for the sign from the 385 coming from the east on the Mary Junction. It's dark, it's nice, signed by the bombard, but not so nice over here. So if I only get three bits, not proposal, does the bit, how much they're going to charge? Going to do it? Maybe our next meeting, we're going to have enough money to do it and that's what we try to do. Any question?
Great job.
Yeah, have wonderful lives, I'm astounded at what you're able to do.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Wally. You know, the fireworks donations that you folks are okay with the city really does help our fireworks. So thank you for that, Wally. All right, our next item. Need a motion to go to the executive session for South Dakota Codified Law, 1-25-2, one personnel.
I make a motion to go to an executive session for South Dakota Codified Law, 1-25-2, one personnel.
Second.
Misty and John will just be the council executive session. And we'll be back as soon as we can. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can you move this off? Misty, we left executive session at 7:46. All right, the next item up on the agenda. I would ask that we have a single motion to approve Personnel Action A.
I'll make a motion to approve Personnel Action Item A.
Second. Any discussion?
I would ask a question, Councilman Grimes. Do you feel that you have a conflict of interest on this item?
I'm not going to answer your question, Mr. Lukens. Let's have a vote.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Upstain.
Opposed?
Aye.
Misty, would you note that, Wes Upstain, please? All right. Motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions Item B through H?
I'll make a motion to approve Personnel Items B through H.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Takes us to committee reports. First movement report, Department of Strategic Finance, Caitlin.
We met today at 1 o'clock at City Hall. Present were myself, Mayor Nelson, Misty, John, Chris Katke, Tracy Bastian, Bill Lukens and Debra Johnston. In old business, we discussed the PBE surplus property. We're hoping by next week it will be available on the auction website. There's some progress there. We also discussed pending ordinance revisions and the process being made. As you will have seen in your packet, there was a copy of the daycare ordinance being worked on. As we also discussed in the meeting, it will undergo more revision before you see it again. We also discussed the residential tax rebate ordinance. We are removing the word formula and references to the repeal, South Dakota Codified Law. Further discussions will be had on the possibility of value limits in districts. If you have any comments or input, we would love to know. We're still passing around, so let us know if you have any comments. We also viewed the demo laptop today that we are looking at purchasing. These were CRF dollars for council members. Adam Finance recommended moving forward with this and hopefully we can see that on the agenda in the near future and get those out. It looked like a really good deal. There was more discussion on a possible future commercial tenant at the airport. We look forward to hearing more about this opportunity, nothing else at this time. In new business, we discussed adding workers' comp coverage to reserve officers. There is currently only four reserve officers and the cost to add them would be $77 per year. For the low cost of this coverage, we felt it should be added. Our, our police department reserve officers, you know, engage in real police work and we appreciate their contributions to our city and our safety. It's the recommendation of Adam Finance that we add workers' comp coverage for our reserve officers. And this would be effective if we do it June, January 1, 2021. We also reviewed the need for the Mueller Civic Center to have an additional 9,500, which will probably come from contingency, for continued repairs to the HVAC system. This would be for the replacement of blower wheel bearings and a shaft for the HVAC system serving the annex and the gym. The current system is about 20 years old that serves that part. Obviously, it has to be done before, or because heat in the winter is important. We also heard discussion on the power factor reviews for the Mueller Civic Center as well. In 2021, we were looking at the cost for potentially putting in a 30 kV AR capacitor bank, which will help smooth out the highs and lows. Our current system is a dry transformer and I bet something up there helped me, Tom. And so it pulls 110% of the energy it needs and that's what we're being charged for. So the new 30 kV AR thing would let us store more power, which would provide cost savings to us and we hope to see this by the end of January on the council agenda. We also discussed, and pro shop building repairs needed. John, we gain more information on this and it's also being discussed in Public Works. We also revisited the discussion of continuing the $200 annual bonus for lifeguards at Evans Plunge, who meet the qualifications of working 300 lifeguard hours as scheduled over the 10-week peak season between May 1 and August 31st. This benefit is still helping retain lifeguards, so we recommend continuation. I believe we'll see this before council in December. Adam Finance is also recommending the remaining racks for police vehicles will be included in the supplemental ordinance. I believe that amount is around $5,800, not including the $1,500 from the bid, which we appreciate the Bid Board's contribution to this effort as well. Our next meeting is December 7th, I believe, 1:00 PM at City Hall.
Caitlin, when you were talking about the workforce comp cost for the reserve officers, you had mentioned $77. I'm confused whether that's 77 per officer or 77 total.
I believe it's 77 per officer per year.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Caitlin? Thank you, Caitlin. Next one, Airport Advisory Committee, Bill.
Airport advisory met on Thursday, October 29th, 8:00 AM at the airport. Present were Larry Vetterman, Don Connor, Ed Jensen, Shane Miller, Pedro Wilson. From the city was Ivan Venter, John Gregory, Tracy Bastian, Scott Sogi and myself. We had guests, John Glassford and George Aiken from Advanced Aero Technologies Group. John Glassford and George Aiken introduced Advanced Aero Technologies Group. They have several locations across the nation and deal with avionics, air maintenance and inspection and flight training. They're looking to grow their company and are interested in Hot Springs as a location. We'll be compiling a proposal for them. The committee continued to review and comment on the airport event evaluation form. Some of the resources provided by the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance forum through our finance officer were shared with the group. The committee reviewed the estimates for Jet A installation and also discussed benefits and concerns for the installation. At this time, given the cost of the installation, which would be about $66,000, the projected volume of sales and the limited storage life of Jet A, the committee recommends that we do not pursue the project at this time. In October, there were 52 flight operations and fuel sales for the period of September 25 through October 27 were 1,013 gallons. Shane Miller, one of the members of the committee, reported that through the Tural application, a third-party rental car would soon be available to the area. This, along with a recent application by a transportation network company in Hot Springs, will go a long way in addressing the ground transportation needs at the airport. Ivan led the committee through a discussion of airport fees and right now, the committee does not recommend any changes for the coming year. The committee discussed how the city hangar could be utilized for the commercial clients such as Advanced Aero Technologies and Ivan took an action item to work with John Gregory to build out the details for a proposal. The next, the meeting adjourned at 9:30 and our next meeting will be Thursday, November 19th, 2020, 8:00 AM at the airport.
Does anyone have any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry.
The next meeting will be Thursday, 12th, at 7:00 PM at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Downtown Historic Preservation, Debra.
The next meeting is supposed to be Wednesday, this Wednesday, at 5 o'clock at the library, but there's been discussion via email with concerns of COVID and since we're only working on ordinances at the moment, there's nothing else on the agenda at this point. They're, they would like to continue working on ordinances via email. So if there is anyone that has something to come onto the agenda, they will need to get in touch with Brian Powers or myself and we can make those arrangements. But at this point, we are diligently trying to get the ordinances revised and on the table.
So you won't be meeting at the library on the fourth?
Probably not, unless something comes up from the public.
All right, thank you, Debra. Evans Plunge Advisory, Larry.
The next meeting will be Thursday, the 12th, at 12 noon at Evans Plunge.
Thank you. Parks Recreation, beautification and cultural development, Wes.
Our next meeting will be Wednesday at 3 o'clock at City Hall. I got a question there on that Evans Plunge Advisory Committee there. Did you guys make the recommendation to put the asphalt in front of the plunge?
No. No.
Who made that recommendation?
I did.
So we're going to tear that road up next year? Can we just spend all this money and put asphalt down for nothing?
Well, there's no guarantee we're going to tear the road up next year. There's certainly an opportunity that's being discussed within Public Works to partner with the road reconstruction that's coming through town and maybe save some money and get that road taken care of from 385 to the, the intersection there by the pump house. But the bigger safety issue in front of us is getting that road leveled to whatever degree we can so that people quit tripping and falling. We've had a number of instances of people falling. One was taken to Fall River Health via an ambulance. So it is a safety issue, it needs to be addressed. We have the money available from the money that was set aside for this year, $150,000 to fix road repairs. So I made the call to go ahead and get that taken care of, it's a safety issue.
I was just curious, because Public Works didn't bring it up either. I asked him this morning. I was just a little curious where that come about.
That's where it came about.
Okay.
Planning and zoning commission, Caitlin.
We met October 21st at 7:00 PM at the Mueller Center. We had a request from David Fluck for, a request to split a lot into separate parcels. There was issues of where the sewer lines run, the minimum lot size and the lot coverage percentage. It was the consensus of the group that we did not want to further divide a lot that was already non-compliant, so we denied that request at this time. We also discussed the armory and then explored ideas about vacating the alley and contacting homeowners. We also discussed requests from Holt Homes for a lot division request and we determined as long as it maintains 6,000 square foot to each lot, that was okay. And they also were wanting a plot plan setback variance. We tabled that until our next meeting when we could see where by withdrawing. We also saw an amended petition for life structure easement for San Pierce. We approved the petition for life structure easement or until Abrams Way is developed, whichever should occur. We approved the petition for life structure easement or until Abrams Way is developed, whichever should occur first. And you'll see that as a resolution on your agenda tonight. Um, and then moving forward on our next meetings, we, um, have changed our meeting time from seven to six P M. during the winter. And in old business, we, um, had an update on the Fall River Ranch R V Resort. There's some dirt work underway. Um, I went down the other day to check it out. They have cleared incredible space down there, so we will see some progress there. Our next meeting is November eighteen at six P M., and I believe we're back at City Hall.
Any questions for Caitlin?
I do. Which alley are you guys thinking about vacating by the armory?
Um, it goes back behind my place. Essentially-
Flint alley?
Well, it's not an alley. Well, there's the alley, and then there's Flint Street, which isn't even there.
The alley-
The alley is sitting on top of the alley.
The alley's in front of the armory?
Well, the armory is sitting on top of a part of the alley.
Part of it. Because there's a street in the back, so I'm getting it wrong.
Right, that's Flint, I believe.
It's supposed to be Flint, which is on the south side of the armory, and the alley's on the north side of the alley.
That alley's still active in front of the armory? Guess a lot of use it.
Alley in front of the armory?
Well, the, the alley that the armory is sitting on top of.
That's not active.
No, it's not.
I mean, it's not vacated, but it's not active.
And I did, uh, check with all of the surrounding landowners, and I've got a hundred percent, um, interest in having it vacated.
So I wonder how that works?
How what?
Homeowners get, you know, usually half the alley, but the alley goes right through their houses. They'll keep the whole alley.
I think the rest of the homes don't sit on the alley. It's just the armory that sits on the alley. I believe maybe one man's garage turned to the end on either Flint or the alley was-
It's like right on the edge of the alley, I think. I was eyeballing it. I couldn't, I, you know, don't have-
If we're taking a G I S map at it's.
Okay, thank you.
I want to add one comment, Wes, to, uh, a little more clarification to your question about the road in front of Evans Plunge. Uh, last Friday, uh, was approached by Billy to see if the city could make a quick decision about getting that road taken care of, again, from a safety standpoint. Uh, because Simons had been taking care of other patches in town. They were in a position to go ahead and get that taken care of if we could give them, uh, to go ahead on short notice. So I went ahead and said yes. Publics-
Would that have been while the hot plant mix was still?
Yes. While the mix was available and while Simons had, um, the, the equipment, uh, to do it. Okay, that takes us to public safety. Uh, Bill and JR?
Okay, public safety met on Wednesday, October twenty-first, one P M. at City Hall. Present were the mayor, J R, Deb, myself, John Gregory, Chief Close, Lori Sherard. We also had four members of the public present. Uh, under Chief Close's update, he informed us that Nikki Shaw with the school board inquired about the process for donating funds for the purchase of crosswalk signs. And she was informed of the city's donation procedure. Uh, Chief Close, uh, attended a meeting with the new state's attorney, and I believe that meeting was on October twenty-seventh. He also informed us of the bid board's offer to fund the wrapping of one of the police department vehicles. And again, we want to thank the bid board for that, uh, providing the funds for that, uh, the wrapping of that vehicle. Uh, the Zercher system should go live on November twelfth. And that's that, um, data management system that's, we funded and, and doing, the training is completed now. And, um, so that should be very beneficial to the department. Our newest officer has been actively patrolling in the alleys and, uh, viewing between some of the houses. And has, uh, uh, caught the attention of quite a few folks. He's been doing this late at night. Uh, and we appreciate his efforts. Uh, that's a technique that he's used, uh, on other, when he's worked for other departments and, uh, is a way to prevent crime, and, uh, we appreciate his proactive efforts to do that. Uh, in September, the department responded to six-hundred-and-twenty-eight calls. Under old business, the committee reviewed the repair and reliability history for the two thousand thirteen Taurus as requested. Based on the ongoing reliability issues that have not been able to be resolved by the city mechanic and two Ford dealership maintenance shops, it's the recommendation of the public safety committee that this vehicle be surplused by the city. And I believe that's an agenda item. Uh, John and Lori provided an update on the status of the two thousand twenty deer population survey. Um, Lori also provided an update on the plan to acquire amber warning lights for city vehicles. We've got twenty-two vehicles that need, uh, amber lights. Uh, members of the committee provided comments on the draft daycare ordinance. That draft is on the information side of your packets tonight for your review and comments. Again, we talked about that in Admin Finance today. Uh, we may go to an even more pared-down version and just, uh, revise the, um, use-on-review permit. Uh, we think we can get the information we need, uh, on the use-on-review permit process without going through a cumbersome ordinance that's going to be difficult to, uh, to implement. So more to come on that. Still working hard, uh, to get something usable and appropriate. Uh, members of the public were present to request a crosswalk, uh, on Menicotta between the Moxon Springs facility and their overflow parking lot on the north side of Menicotta. The committee requi, uh, supports the request, this request, and will pursue it. Additionally, the members of the public asked for signage, uh, to be installed, uh, to the west warning of the crosswalk and also painting, uh, the curb on the north side of Menicotta between the west driveway, uh, exit of their overflow parking lot, uh, towards Lookout Avenue. And, uh, the committee also supports this request and will pursue it when weather permits. A member of the public had requested that railing be installed on the west side of the flood wall by America's Best Value In. The committee's investigating this request. Uh, reports were received from three members of the committee regarding potential hydraulic leaks, uh, hydraulic oil spills from garbage trucks, uh, in the city on October twentieth. Uh, the committee began, uh, reviewing an application from a transportation network company to operate in Hot Springs beginning January two thousand twenty-one. And so far, it looks like everything's in line, uh, for that application.
Are you, you, what, what was that?
There's a transportation network company, uh, has, uh, submitted an application to operate in Hot Springs.
Okay, has nothing to do with hydraulic leaks. You need to clarify that.
Sorry, moved too quickly? No, uh, no hydraulic leaks from the transportation network company. Next item, uh, based on the claims reviews from a previous council meeting, we, uh, looked at the boot reimbursement policy, uh, to determine its actual purpose. It's actually a clothing reimbursement policy that, uh, employees may use for any type of clothing and not just boots. And lastly, we briefly discussed a new state law on the use of mobile electronic devices while driving that went into effect on July first, two thousand twenty. And it's, uh, more complicated than I want to relate to in this committee report. J R. What'd you miss?
You nailed it.
Okay, uh, meeting ended about four P M., and our next meeting will be Wednesday, November eighteenth, one P M. at City Hall.
Questions for Bill or J R.? Thank you, Bill. Up next is Public Works. Craig?
We met October twenty-seventh at one o'clock, City Hall. Present was Billy, Sean, Scott, John, Mayor Nelson, myself, Deb. Started with value drainage. Nothing's been done with that yet. I'll just go to the stuff. Alley and pavement patches complete, as far as I know. When we have the meeting, is at least have the equipment, the small loader repaired. The small loader was down. They said it'd be about twelve thousand to fix it. Should be up and running soon if it isn't done already. We hired one part-time employee. Alley maintenance, we haven't started that yet. The D N R required fence around the merf. That's supposed to start first November, I don't know if it started yet or not. And we had a request on an alley. It would be Clark into City Alley for the maintenance of snow and ice removal. Utilities, sewer obstruction at Lincoln, sewer repair at Blue Mesa. Ended up being ruts in both of them. The city got them cleaned out. The pump, Evans Pump Station, there's a pump that's going out of it. We're getting bids right now on the pumps, and we'll replace it as soon as we can pump it. Okay, sludge at the merf. We've been hauling it. We started, I guess, after the meeting, because last thing I had, we had to test to see what the iron content was. And I never heard anything, so I know, I know we're hauling it, so it must have been good. FEMA hazard grants, the two generators, you need a town of at least ten thousand people to be able to apply for that grant. Hot Springs didn't quite make it. Uh, the mobile food vendor, we came up with a, a price of what we're going to charge per month there. Per week will be sixty dollars, per month will be a hundred and seventy-five. And we're coming up with a plan and what we're gonna do with that area and the upgrades we're gonna have on the area when we're done. New business, the armory property, I guess there's twelve people interested in it so far, maybe more. First pile, we need a date in November so we can come up with when we want to. We're gonna burn two piles out of the merf. We don't know what date it is. We'll have to do the research. The Walsh Oak Building, I guess we have people interested. Highway construction, highway construction, discussion with Zach, Rich Zachard? I wasn't there for that. Future meetings, I guess he's gonna come to a council meeting, next council meeting? And talk to the city about the Walsh Oak Building?
Of the highway construction.
And the highway construction. The V A easement in Rock removal, we're waiting for Anderson to do a survey on it before they'll sign off an easement for us. Yes, that's all I have. My next meeting will be November tenth at one, City Hall.
Anybody have any questions for Craig?
Yeah, I do. So this, uh, sludge we're hauling to Rappin City Sewer Plant, now is this coming on going?
It ain't from the sewer plant. It's just stuff that we all love from the merf.
Well, it came from the sewer plant. It was, it was supposed to be the sludge blocks that were, that were being made by this, uh, sludge press.
That's what we're hauling.
So is this coming on going, another bill for the citizens? We were told once we got the sludge block machine that it would solve all the problems, and here we are again, we're, we're back to-
I'm told that we're working on a boiler, so it'll make it hotter, you know? Help me out here, John. You know more about that stuff than I do.
It's the boiler. They have to get the temperature up to a certain, certain temperature to kill pathogens. They're weighing the cost of repairing the boiler and the cost of propane to do that.
Versus hauling it?
So once again, we got something that's really not working the way we were promised, John.
But that's nothing you can hold this council responsible for.
I'm not saying it's this council.
This council can only react or, or, you know, take care of the situations that are in front of us. As, as far as hauling it, uh, the preference would be, if we have to haul it, uh, would be to haul it to Edgemont. Uh, but haul, Edgemont will not accept that, uh, particular sludge, so the next option is to haul to Rappin City.
And when they first proposed that to the city, it seemed worth perfect. But we didn't buy it at the time, and future councils did. And it's the same thing that they showed us by the way they went down.
What's supposed to happen in optimal functioning levels, what's supposed to happen to the bricked-up sludge?
Well, it, it's supposed to be put into our compost, ground up in it for fertilizer.
Okay.
I know the first stuff that we had, a gentleman here in town used it on a couple of trees, and I guess they're unbelievable now. So the stuff that they did first, I'm sure we did it. Any other questions?
Uh, one comment, uh, through Public Works. Uh, when we get to a point that we're ready to burn the brush pile, I believe the city has a responsibility to not be the only folks to determine when that brush pile gets burnt. And by that, I mean, uh, Fall River Health System has very expensive pre-filters for their air handling systems. Uh, and it wouldn't be responsible for the city of Hot Springs to potentially contaminate their filters right after they've replaced them. They've been willing to work with us. Uh, they replace them on a quarterly basis. So we need to know when they're going to replace those filters next. Uh, and burn that pile is close to when they, uh, replace them, rather than right after they replace them.
I agree.
That would be a good neighborhood policy. It's not a matter of us picking a date. It's a matter of us coordinating a date with Fall River Health so that, uh, we don't contaminate their brand new filter. So that would be my request and our expectation, that we work with them to pick a date that works for both of us. Any other questions for, for Craig?
How long has that unit been down that it won't? It doesn't get hot enough for us to create the block that would be acceptable for us to keep?
I have no idea. Evidently, since they blocked the thing, they have the new burden in it. Am I right, John?
It worked for a short time, I understand. It's before my time, and I don't have any windows, but-
Cole has said that he's going to increase the temperature on it in the hopes of giving, um, the gunk to the proper temperature that it could be stuck out at the landfill and worked in with the rest of our recyclable, or, uh, recyclable stuff. They are working the problem, and hopefully we'll get beyond it, and we won't have to continue hauling.
But I'll let you all know when it's done. Promise.
All right, next item is Southern Hills Economic Development. J R.?
Southern Hills Economic Development did not meet. However, um, I and Administrator John Gregory, uh, dialed in to Dakota Resource webinar, conducted by Mike Kamnitz, and we got to hear from different communities across the state on what they are doing, uh, within their communities to, uh, enhance it. Just make it more friendly or, um, pay an homage to some veterans, um, things of that nature. We heard from Sturgis, they did a, a Gold Star family monument. They have a downtown Sturgis foundation where, uh, the, the tax money from the downtown businesses go right back into the downtown improvement. Webster had a, uh, just a recycling trailer that they, they finally put out there to help, save some money and save some landfill. being filled up, so they got a county grant for that. And in fact, AARP gave 10,000 to them for them to be able to utilize. Administrator John Gregory gave one heck of a spiel on the city of Hot Springs, and John, I'll let you talk about that.
Thank you, JR. I just did a presentation on how we went about getting the funding for the suspended sidewalk project and the process that we had to go through. The enhancement that it will be for the city and providing some of the concept designs that ISG had provided up.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any questions for JR? Thank you. Next is Southern Hills Golf Course. The next meeting will be the first, the second, Monday. So it'll be next Monday, City Hall at 5:00. In my manager's report, I will mention something about hole number 12 at the golf course. That takes us to our ordinances. Our first item A is the second reading of ordinance 1219. Revising Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 70 Traffic Regulations. Can I get a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1219 revising Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 70 Traffic Road Regulations. Code 70 dot 08 and Chapter 71, Bicycles and Skateboards. 71 dot 03A1 and 2. And code 71 dot 04J1 and 2. And code 71 05.
Second.
Any discussion? Wes, did you get a chance to take a look at J1? And see if the language that you had requested to be added is the way that you expected it, and you're satisfied with that particular change?
Yes, sir.
Are you okay with it?
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Coleman, roll, please.
Wes Grimes.
Yay.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, give yourselves a pat on the back. Took us a while, but we got there. Next ordinance, item B, first reading of ordinance 1220. Revising Title XV Land Usage, Chapter 150 Building Regulations. Can I get a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1220 revising Title XV Land Usage, Chapter 150 Building Regulations. 150.01B, 150.03, 150.04I, 12, and J, 12, and 3, and K, and N, and 150.05A and B.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Coleman, roll, please.
Wes Grimes.
Yay.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
First reading passes. Next brings us to Resolutions, Item A. Resolution 2020 dash 29, a resolution to surplus city property. Can I get a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash 29, a resolution to surplus city property. PD 2013 for Intercourse. Bid number 1F8H P2MT7DG123571. Second.
Any discussion?
Are we gonna are you gonna have a million price on that?
That was the question I was gonna put back to you, I believe a discussion you and I had, you felt that there was significant value in at least the engine in that vehicle, if nothing else. And if you felt that there should be the city should look at a a better value, is that correct?
I think so. And then get on one vote.
Now that seems reasonable, we want to get as much money out of our surplus equipment as we can?
That's the same thing I was gonna say. I know these hot rod places make computers for that. So you can take that motor off and put in a little hot rod and buy a computer, you can use that computer and bolt it up and go and that is high dollar. Very expensive.
Though it seems that you have some knowledge of this, so we'd be looking to your advice and suggestions on how we all offer it, once if you approve this resolution, then what's the right language for the disposition of it?
Twin Turbine Charger, sport V6 motor.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution passes. Resolution Item B, Resolution 2020 dash 30, a resolution to grant an easement for either the life of a current garage that approaches on Abrams Way. Can I get a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to grant an easement for either the life of the current garage that approach on Abrams Way or until Abrams Way is developed to Sam D. Pierce, aka Sam D. Pierce, as owner of lots 9, 10, and 11, Block 23. Mammoth Springs addition to the town, now city of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota.
Second.
All right, before we get into discussion, I believe that Pat and Sammy are here. Is there anything you would like to say to the council? And you also get a free plastic bag on behalf of the city?
So what we did is, we had met with the planning zone and we had asked that in addition to the life of the structure, that it also be conditioned upon Abrams Way is ever developed, whichever occurred first, so that we give the city the right to remove those structures if they wanted to develop Abrams Way. And the planning zone, I think the mayor maybe suggested that it also be conditioned on that if the city had to make any improvements to its utilities and inadvertently damaged the property. The city was not liable, and we agree for that. And also received an email from Mrs. Stats, who owns the property behind Mr. Pierce. Would be better that if Abrams Way was developed, she indicated she has no desire to do anything further with her property. Which is 87 years old, so you have somebody else to pay that. So that's the conditions that are placed upon that, so if the city has the ability to develop Abrams Way before the life of the structures end, it's so desired.
Does the council have any questions? So to what Pat was just describing to you folks, in your info site of the package, there is a letter there from Tracy and Cole that they went up and took a look at the existing conditions and feel that there is enough access to the sewer land that's up there. If they need to get in there and work on it, they're able to do that. There's nothing about the existing structures that would prevent them from doing that. To Pat's other comment, that the condition was added or Abrams Way would be developed. That came about because of what we went through as a council with Catholican Avenue. Catholican Avenue was allowing to have some property encroached on us up by Catholican and, or up by the Armory. And at the time, the council made a decision to allow that encroachment. It seemed to make sense, we believe it made sense at the time. Nobody thought that Catholican Avenue would ever, on that end of town, would ever on that end of Catholican Avenue, would ever need to be used, so let's go ahead and allow the encroachment. So we, in this particular case, not knowing what's gonna happen in five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road, we just felt that it was necessary to make sure that the city is always in a position to be able to develop Abrams Way if necessary. And Pat, am I correct that whatever language necessary to make that clear will be attached to the deed? So whoever purchases the new property understands that, and then if that owner sells the property, that each successive owner will understand that that restriction is there. Will that be on the deed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, any questions from the council? All right. Don't forget your free gift on behalf of the city. Pat, Sammy, thank you for your time. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. So we're heading to new business, new business item A. Possible motion discussion to authorize the mayor to sign the State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement. Can I get a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for preliminary engineering, State Administration Funding Agreement for preliminary engineering for structure number 24 dash 290 dash 029 Minicotta Bridge. Project number BRO 8024 0021 dash 1 PCN 08C5.
Second.
Any discussion?
When does this gonna take place? The engineering of the bridge?
He said the whole process go through the whole process with, hopefully, at the end of four years, we'd have a bridge. But this is part of that process.
I didn't know that, but I was just wondering.
He said when he did his presentation the other day, that the work would be done in 2021.
2021? Oh, for this part?
This is for the design of the bridge?
Yeah.
My question is, if the city don't have the money when this thing is ready to build?
Well, if we don't have the money, we don't have to accept the grant.
We already did accept the grant, and it was 70,000 as an estimate in total expenses, and the city's portion would be 20 percent, the grant was approved up to 48,400, it's in these documents, and so our portion would be around 22,000.
My response was to what I thought Wes was asking, is what if we don't have the money to build the bridge? Did I misunderstand your question, Wes?
No, my question, I guess, was the state architecture.
So to Misty's point, our share of this grant is 10,000, it's for the design of the bridge. It doesn't obligate us to the bridge, or obligated to the design of the bridge.
This is actually just preliminary engineering.
Okay.
But there's still another design piece of the area.
Okay.
But the substance of the whole bridge discussion is that we have an 80-plus year old bridge with a life expectancy of 70 years, so we're walking on thin air here. So going forward, we need to really catch what we can with these big grants. In my mind.
Yes, it would be the same situation as the Jennings Bridge. It would be prudent on the city to figure out how to pay for a new bridge that's desperately needed. All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item B, a possible motion discussion to authorize the mayor to sign the corrective quick claim deed. Granting all interest in the south half of southeast quarter. I'll let you folks be sure of that. Can I get a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the corrective quick claim deed granting all interest in the south half of the southeast quarter. Last track 1, last track 2 of Section 10 Township 7, South Range 5, east of the Black Hills, Meridian, Fall River County, South Dakota, from the city of Hot Springs to Donna, Janet.
Second. Okay, any discussion? What this takes care of is a while back, the city was granted some property from Jennings out by the Hotbrook Pump Station. They gave us too much property. So we ended up with property we shouldn't have. So this quick claim deed is returning to them the property that they shouldn't have given to us in the first place. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. New business item C, possible motion discussion to authorize the city administrator to accept change order number 1. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Make a motion to authorize city administrator to accept change order number 1 for an additional $1,725 to dislet construction for the removal of 69 square yards of concrete pavement under the asphalt street on the east end of the structure, project number BRO 8024 parentheses 00 18 dash 1 PCN 06 VF aka Jennings Bridge replacement.
Second.
Any discussion?
They'd be taking that out when they put the new street in?
No, this is on this is on the American Legion site?
No, on the other side. It's over by the tattoo shop. It was supposed to have only asphalt there, but when they pulled the asphalt off, there was still concrete underneath it. So they had to get that concrete out to get the 45 degree wedge that's required for the backfill on that apartment.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item D, possible motion discussion to authorize the mayor to sign the professional engineering services agreement between the city of Hot Springs and FNG Engineering. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the professional engineering services agreement between the city of Hot Springs and FNG Engineering for the North River Street deal, technical investigation services to be provided in the amount of $6,657.
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess I'd like to learn more about what is it?
This is the sole boreings for the preliminary design of a roadway section on Highway 35 intersection to the intersection of Coldbrook and Hotbrook. It's 12 boreings.
So this is for the suspended sidewalk, basically?
No, this is in front of Evans Point.
This is in front of Evans Point. And we need to do this, why?
Because to design a roadway, you need to know what's underneath, what's there now. There's been discussion that we have a shallow water table problem in that area. So to overcome that shallow water table problem in the design, you need to know what the conditions are.
There's already a street there.
That has all sorts of ripples in it.
That's because it's asphalt, the trucks are really high.
And there might be spongy land underneath of it.
Sure. Okay?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Just one opposed?
Yes, just Wes. New business item F, possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the pro shop manager to sign the scorecard agreement.
Skip one. Skip E.
Skipped one? I did skip one. New business item E. Possible motion discussion to hire Gene Fennell as an expert witness in the corner construction case.
I'll make a motion to hire, to approve the hiring of Gene Fennell as an expert witness in the cornerstone corner construction case and authorize the mayor to sign a consultant's agreement on behalf of the city at a rate of 145 dollars an hour.
Second.
Discussion?
What did this guy do on that? Did he work for the...
He was the assistant architect. He was the person on the project.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now on to new business item P, a possible motion to discussion, discussion to approve and authorize the pro shop manager to sign the scorecard agreements.
Make a motion to approve? Make a motion to approve and authorize the pro shop manager to sign the scorecard agreement and proof approval form from Golf Score LLC?
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item G, a possible motion discussion to approve the transfer of the following property to the city of Hot Springs Maintenance Department. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Make a motion to approve the transfer of the following property to the city of Hot Springs Maintenance Department, two thousand three four F two fifty, seven one nine one, from the Water Fund, and two thousand five inwards semi truck, three six six nine, from the wastewater fund.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item H, possible motion discussion to approve the following liquor and retail wine license renewal applications. Want everybody to jump on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the following liquor and retail wine license renewal applications. American Legion Post seventy-one, Big Time Pizza, Buffalo Dreamer Restaurant LLC, B W Gas and Convenience Retail LLC, doing business as Yes Way number one one seven seven, C S Inc., doing business as Winner Circle, Consort Corp., doing business as Board of County, Decodermart Inc., doing business as Lenz Decodermart, Dolchun Midwest LLC, doing business as Dollar General Store number one eight one eight one, Earth Grids LLC, Family Dollar Stores of South Dakota LLC number seven one two six, Frankie's Place, G Two Lawn Care Service, doing business as The Vault, Hanging J LLC, doing business as Red Rocket Resort, Sunny Superfoods, Southern Hills Golf Course, Springs Restaurant, and Woolies Western Grill.
Second. Thank you, Caitlin. Sam couldn't have done it better. Discussion?
Yeah, I see four businesses here in town that aren't even open, so what's happened with that?
My take on that would be they're still their liquor licenses. If they're shut down because of COVID and they want to open back up, they still have a liquor license available to them.
There is a time limit if you check into the state on the liquor license, right?
Yeah, these are...
It's two years?
These are liquor and retail wine license, so I'm not sure what businesses you're specifically asking about.
Like the bowl, if they don't build it within a certain time, that liquor license will be put up for sale. The city takes it back?
Big Time Pizza's up for sale, Earth Grids is up for sale.
They're applying to renew their licenses, so they have the ability to sell the license with the business, with the transfer. We can't project what's gonna happen in the next couple of years, but we can deal with that if it's not a big...
But if it's not used within a certain amount of years, the city takes it back, am I correct?
I'm not sure that there is a law that references that, although Mary and I did talk about that, her concern with that. It's not in our ordinances, and she reached out to the state and hasn't gotten response back yet.
We took the V A Bs back.
No, they didn't pay for theirs and they didn't follow the, they didn't renew. They didn't follow their operating license and they left it dormant without renewing for a couple of years.
Please ask a question from the Liquor Commission lot for us to decide.
I think we should check on that.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item I, possible motion discussion to authorize the finance officer to cash out the three Wells Fargo CDs.
Make a motion to authorize the finance officer to cash out the three Wells Fargo CDs that maturity and deposit those funds into the Bank West checking account. Those accounts being two one two, six oh two, and six oh four.
Second. Any discussion?
Why are we taking CDs and putting them in a checking account that don't do the interest service?
Good. The checking account pays point two seven percent. A twelve-month CD pays two point two four, and we need the funds before twelve months because this is all road reconstruction money that's set aside.
All right, no, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to new business item J. If you remember, we amended that to one South Dakota fit and to delete account six two one from there. So can I get a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to authorize the finance officer to reissue the one South Dakota fit CD for a term of twelve months versus seven oh one.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item K, possible motion discussion to approve a plat of Mammoth Trash at the track of block one of Anderson's Mountain View Edition. Can I get a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve a plat of Mammoth Track of Block One of Anderson's Mountain View Edition, city of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, containing lot fourteen less the west fifteen feet of the north thirty-five feet, all of lots fifteen through thirty-two, and lots sixty through seventy-seven, and the alley vacated with this plat adjacent to lots fourteen through nineteen and lots sixty-five through seventy, and the previously vacated alley adjacent to lots twenty through twenty-four and lots sixty through sixty-four, and the vacated portion of Evanston Avenue adjacent to lots sixty-two through seventy-seven, all in block fifteen of Stewart Second Edition to the town, now city of Hot Springs, and lots one through eight, nine C, ten, eleven, the balance of lot twelve, thirteen C through twenty-three C of block one, and the vacated portion of Evanston Avenue adjacent to lots two through six of block one of Anderson's Mountain View Edition to the city of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota.
Second. And thank you again. Any discussion?
Yes. Any of these alleys have utilities in them? Or is there easement in case we need the utilities in them?
We obviously don't have an answer for you. Or it appears we don't have an answer.
I don't think we should vote on this unless we have an answer.
Is this all in preparation for the P U D, the Mammoth Site P U D? Is that what this is all concerning, creating that? So it becomes their thing and what they're going to do with it?
Well, I don't care the city alleys. If there's utilities that the city owns, they need to be in that. Or if we need utilities in the alleys later on, there needs to be an easement in there for us to be able to do that. So I make the motion we table this until we find out if there's an easement in there or not, or if we need one.
Well, I think you're gonna need to make an amendment because the motion is already in front. And whether Caitlin will accept an amendment to her motion or if she wants to amend her motion.
It's up to her.
Well, don't they normally display the easements on these? If there is one?
Not necessarily. This does talk about a right of way permit where that's filed, but it's not saying anything about the easement.
Okay.
I'll accept amendment to my motion.
John, is this something that time-wise needs to be decided tonight? Or can the council table it and get Craig his answer, Craig, Wes, and the rest of the council the answer about whether there's any utilities in these alleys that are being vacated? And will be a utility easement for it?
We can certainly get the utilities verified between now and the next meeting. All right.
I guess I want a provision that if we need to do something there, I still want to know. I don't want just to know if there is a utility there currently because this is how the city gets itself into these problems.
Yeah. And I think that's what Craig is asking for, is to confirm if there are some there than to have the utility easement attached to this.
Sorry, Caitlin, reading all that. She can live next to you.
Do I need to say anything else?
Would you be okay to restate your motion to table this one until we can determine whether there's utilities that need to have easements?
Yes. I'll restate my motion, table it until we find that out.
Second.
Can I answer your question, Craig?
I wanna... I'd like something put in here that there's gonna be an easement on the alley?
Yes.
For future?
Yes, if there are utilities there that need an easement, that will change the agenda to include, we'll ask, Anderson Engineers will need to identify those, so it goes on. Amen.
Sounds good.
So that meets your concern?
Yeah.
Wes?
Yep.
All right. So then Caitlin, would you restate your motion, please? Hey, you're on the roll. You're okay with it? All right, is the council clear on what?
The second time was wrong.
Council clear on what you're voting on? To table this motion until we can determine whether there are utilities easements in any alleys that are being vacated?
Can I just bring forward, under the legend, it has listed all the things that were found. And shouldn't utilities have been listed under that legend and there are none?
No, no, that's the, that's all the caps and things they find in the ground, there are utilities that wouldn't be there.
Okay, all right. I'm good.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to table this particular item to determine whether there's necessity for utility easements?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion passes. New business item, thank you, Craig, L, possible motion discussion to approve a plat of Daniella Track and Thomas Track to block four?
I make a motion to approve a plat of Daniella Track and Thomas Track to block four, Grandview Place, addition to Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly lots twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, block four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Last new business item, possible motion discussion to remove a shop. I'm gonna butcher this.
A shop.
From the Business Improvement District Board. Can I get a motion on that one, please?
I'll make a motion to remove a shop, Chad Hari, from the Business Improvement District Board and appoint Vicki Wetzel to fill the remaining term through twelve, thirty-one, twenty, twenty-one.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Misty, we've worked our way to you. Finance Officer, report, please.
The reason I had to remove the six twenty-one, which is not an account number, it's a fund number, the CD renewal, that is our Evans Punch Debt Service Reserve CD. We will be addressing that CD in the near future, but currently with our refunding that we're doing, that amount will change. We'll need to right-size the Debt Service Reserve Fund for the new issue, and we're not sure whether or not we will need to remit the entire Debt Service Reserve when we settle the bonds that we're refunding and then have them reissue the new amount, which will be somewhere around a hundred and thirty thousand. Or if we can just remit the difference between the two. So we plan to, we, the bond issuers, plan to sell and set interest rates on November fifth and then close the bond issue on December eighth. So after the thirty-day call notice requirement for the old bonds, we'll know. And then we'll be addressing that additional CDs. So just to give you an idea why we removed that one from the renewal. The CDs that we did cash out, the choice that council made in December two thousand eighteen to set aside some of that money that we were saving for the road reconstruction netted us about fifty-six thousand dollars in interest. So it was a good decision and it helps grow that money we're gonna use for the projects we have coming up next year. I do have the regular financial reports available to you, and then also on the very back of the investment reports for the CD is where I provided the summary for the rates that we compared when making the recommendations on what to do with the CDs that were maturing. We did not approve Wells Fargo credit cards in this batch of claims. They will be on the eleven sixteen agenda. The impacts of the pandemic on revenue collection throughout the city is summarized for you in your report. The best news is that the golf course has done better than it's done in years past, and revenue is up twenty-nine percent or a hundred and fourteen thousand. We see revenue down in the majority of the other places that I'm tracking except for our gross receipts tax because of, most likely because of timeliness of remittance payments. For the first time, that's no longer down. It's up about three, three and a half percent or forty-two hundred year to date. And our general sales and use tax revenue is up seventeen percent or a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. The rest of the bad news, I'll just leave for you to read in the report and not summarize it. Summary of the CDs is in there. We just talked about that a little bit. At our admin finance, we reviewed the twenty twenty-one citywide fee resolution that will be presented to the council at the twelve seven meeting for review. Also, the last supplemental appropriation ordinance for twenty twenty will be reviewed at the second meeting in November. I have been reaching out to department heads requesting inputs on both the fees they charge and any remaining budget additions that are needed prior to the end of the year. The water and wastewater user charges and subsequent forgiveness will result in a number of entries on our supplemental appropriation ordinance, and that's normal. That's how we handle those claims. I'll give you an update on the COVID Recovery Fund or C R F dollars that have been allocated by the state. It takes about three or four claims submitted to get a claim approved and paid, but we're working through that. I recently completed the unclaimed property recording that's required by South Dakota law. We do monitor and attempt to contact owners of checks that are uncashed greater than ninety days. We make every attempt to get the money into the hands of its rightful owners. This year, we remitted two checks that have reached the dormancy period. They were both unclaimed water deposit refunds. So people move, we apply their deposits, and then we issue a check to them. And not always do they cash, and not always do we have good contact information after they've left. So with the attempts we've made in monitoring and trying to contact people early, we've only had to remit a total of six checks in the last three years. We've been asked to review city personnel policies in the safety manual. We've been discussing and working, discussing and working through those revisions. There's gonna be more to come on that, and I just wanted to give you an idea and a heads up that we're doing that. Any of you are interested in those policies and need access to them, let me know and I'll provide them. And then I just wanted to point out, I think it's a perfect example of how much goes into running the city, all the different items on just this agenda, which we met two weeks ago. There's over half a million dollars in claims to be paid, not including our Wells Fargo credit cards, twelve committee updates, including bid, two ordinance revisions, including changes to eight sections in our ordinances, resolution to surplus city property, petition and resolution to grant easement, grant agreements for preliminary engineering, corrective quick claim deed, change orders, number of agreements for professional services, the transfer of assets between city departments, seventeen liquor and wine license renewals, authorization to move over one point six million dollars of city investable assets, two revised plats. I think it's a good example. There's no doubt that there's a lot that goes on in running our city, and we simply couldn't do it without each and every one of you and our excellent city staff. So... So I just want, I thought this was a perfect time to draw attention to that.
Any questions from Misty's report? Thank you, Misty. John, City Administrator's report, please.
Well, it's been busy since the last council meeting. We've had several discussions with Rick Zucker, with the DOT, discussing schedules, project sequencing for the Highway 18, 385 reconstruction. There's been a couple of different options presented, South Menacotta plus Menacotta North. If we broke the project up into two pieces, we'd be looking at three years. Option two would be do the entire project at one time. We want a two-year project. That's part of what the DOT is coming to speak to us about at our next council meeting. It will be attended by Rick Zucker, Tom Seaman from Rapid City, the regional engineer, and Mike Dean wants to get in on with it on a Zoom meeting. He is the director of planning and engineering. Part of the reasoning behind breaking up into two projects is the concern of the waste of the building, because it is condemned and currently uninsurable. At this time, the deadline for removal or stabilization of that building has been extended until June 1st. And we'll probably be discussing that more as we move forward. We also began discussions with the DOT about our proposed city project, which we're calling North River Street Reconstruction at Evans Pines. Initially, the DOT suggested we might want to combine that with the state project, but after further review, there were too many variables involved, and the timeline did not work. So they recommended that we prepare a project design for a city project that will let, in a similar fashion as the DOT project, in the same timeline, so that way we might have the opportunity to enjoy the contractor pricing that the DOT is getting on their highway reconstruction with our project. Since most likely the materials will be coming down that street. We have received three proposals for the geotechnical study required for that road. Of the three, we had the globe litter of FNG, which was presented to you earlier. Currently, we put in an interim fix. We did some minor street patching. There was less than 18 tons of asphalt used to fill in the ruts. That was done Saturday. Our streets parks and maintenance department and utilities combined have been busy working on these asphalt patchwork. They have to open up, clean all the spots, and get them packed before Simon comes in and puts the asphalt down. We've also been, maintenance department's been working on modifying the wastewater treatment plant's Kenworth to replace the aging freightliner tractor that we use for the side dump and other uses. Pacific Steel has removed the scrap metals that we collected during the two free dump weeks of 2020. They have one more load to remove. Wastewater Treatment Plant has transported the sludge from the MRF facility to the Rapid City landfill. That is complete. That was a recommendation by DNR. There's been some work on the repairs of the sewer near Blue Mesa, that is the city sewer line, that requires some maintenance to remove roots again. We've also begun the evaluations of contractor damages on this phase of the project for fiber optics installation. Some more asphalt patching will be required in the spring. When the guys on the snow removal work, they did Sunday and Monday, 10:25 and 10:26. It was actually less than two inches of accumulated snow on the roads, but they got it cleared anyway. We're scheduling the purchase of a pump for the Evans Pines Pump Station. One of the pumps is 20 years old. Its service life is coming to an end. The pressure is dropping on it. We've also have, the one meeting down in Tate, the overflow float assembly will actually be replaced. Committee items, particularly public works. We have gone over the pavement patching. As soon as this ends, we're gonna be shifting to alley maintenance, which will include limbs and trees and bushes being cut out of these alleys, and other visibility instructions we're encountering at our intersections. In accordance with our Title IX General Regulation, Chapter 94 Streets and Sidewalks, Section 9412, trimming trees and shrubs within a, overhanging, a public right-of-way is a responsibility of the property owner. It is not removed by the property owner. According to IDD, the cost of such removal will be assessed and billed to the owner. Parking orders that we just approved, they're one-second reading, will be official after 20 days after publishing. That means the vehicles, especially recreation vehicles that are parked on our streets that are... Depending upon our snow removal process, will have to be removed. That's part of the Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 7, Traffic Regulation 70.08, Parking Obedience Design. Lastly, the library's been scheduling a lot of things to keep us busy. Poetry Night is Friday, November 6th at 7:00 p.m. Computer Classics in November, on the 3rd and 4th at 10:30 a.m. They've got some special children's variety events for November. Leo Day, November 6th. I just can't wait. Makerspace Day, which is wet felting, with the Chicago Parks and Market doing a presentation for them on November 13th. Ruby Day is November 20th. They also had their Food for Fines event going on down in November. One food item is equal to $5 in fines for chickens. That's all I got. Thank you.
Any questions for John?
John, why does the state recommend that, would they rather go two years or three years on this street project?
They would prefer to do the two-year project, because they believe they can get better quotes from a contractor, because the project size would be larger.
I think if the city of Hot Springs, that would be better than three years, just for businesses. It'd be more of a hardship if we showed up for a whole other year. So I think we need to push with the two-year project.
They will be presenting those options at our next council meeting before discussion.
Anything else for John? All right. Brief mayor's report. First, I want to thank Councilman Larry Pratt, City Administrator John Gregory, Finance Officer Misty Summers Walton, and City Engineer Tracy Baston for participating on behalf of the city in the Merchants Trick or Treat Halloween event at City Hall on Halloween night. That was on their own time. They all said there was great turnout, and everyone had a fun time. Second reading of Ordinance 1219, an ordinance that addresses parking within the city, was approved by council tonight. The ordinance won't take effect until November 25th, but I want to mention one change to the existing ordinance. No recreational vehicle or trailer can be parked on any public street, alley, or public property, including right-of-way between November 1st and March 31st. This change to the ordinance was made to help with the removal of snow during our winter months. I'll be asking the police department, building inspector, and animal control officer to take advantage of the time between now and November 25th, begin notifying property owners, they have until November 25th to move their vehicles, or they will be subject to be towed. Please help the city's street department keep up with clearing snow off the streets by removing recreational vehicles or trailers. And I want to thank Brett for working with the city to have space available, to have that notice published in the paper this week. It saves us a week, so that we can get this taken care of by November 25th. The golf course staff and volunteers have begun to work on replacement of the cart path on hole number 12 on the golf course. Money was raised from a memorial golf tournament for Don Gannon and donated to the city with the stipulation the money would be used for the replacement of the cart path. Don was a longtime Hot Springs golfer and hoped to someday, and hope someday, to be able to replace the cart path on hole number 12. The golf community came together and raised money through the memorial tournament with the intent to honor Don by completing his wish to replace golf cart path. I also want to thank the local fire department for their quick response to the fire on Sunday near Baumgarde. Their quick actions kept a small fire from becoming a much larger fire that could have quickly threatened surrounding residences. So with that, that takes us to our last agenda item, executive, another executive session per South Dakota qualified law, 1-25-2-3, legal. Can I get a motion to go into executive session, please?
Make a motion that we go into executive session in accordance with the South Dakota qualified law, 1-25-2-3, that's legal.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, where's our attorney?
Our attorney is under the weather. He's not available to be with us. So this will be more of a 10,000-foot information to the council about a couple of items that we've been keeping you up to date on, and giving you some new information. So I don't expect that it will take terribly long, but that's up to you folks, depending on how many questions you have. So, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Misty, John, if you would join us in this executive session. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Second.